We're going to follow this regular council meeting order, December 16, 2024. Roll call, Mr. Lauer.
I've not heard from Ms. Shanafell.
She's in the park.
Oh, she'll be here shortly. Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Arcurry?
Here.
Dr. Poroska?
Here.
Mr. Steigl?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What the record show, Ms. Shanafell is not here. Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the council meeting held on December 19, 24.
So moved.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Approval of public hearing transcript held in November 25, 2024.
So moved.
Yeah, the only issue with that, my name is spelled wrong with the entire document.
Okay. The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Seeing no special reports, audience comments, leave it up to five minutes for non-agenda items unless extended by council. Seeing none, no unfinished business, new business. Environmental Quality Board proposal regarding Rolling Hills Park.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening.
Natalie Schier, 415 Scotland.
I'll go ahead and start while they're signing it. So, thanks for letting us come today and share our proposal with you. As you, many of you know, Environmental Quality Board is here to support and educate the community on environmental and sustainability issues and initiatives. We've had a lot of different initiatives in the township like Cleanup Day, we've added bat boxes, we've helped with recycling, MS4 education for pollinator gardens, and most recently our American Chestnut Grove in Rolling Hills Park, and our historic trees throughout the community. So, also early on, we were asked to help with some of the design phases of Rolling Hills Park, and we focused our efforts on the Nature Center, and we fully support the growth and development of all the planned amenities, but we also know that a park like this is going to take time in order to come to fruition. And so we're here tonight to share three new and one already accomplished initiatives that might kickstart some of those environmental aspects of the park. I'm going to talk about one of them, and then Blaze and Natalie are going to talk about the others. The first is an accomplished one. So in 2023, EQB along with the community volunteers planted American chestnuts in the American Chestnut Germplasm Conservation Orchard, it's a mouthful, in the park, and we did that with educational signage, some of our high school students were there, and we did a lot of kind of community volunteers. So we thought we would further some of those efforts, and one way is to do a native tree trail. And so we would suggest kind of planting either in one area or in a trail where kids and adults alike could follow along, learn about those native trees. We'd have signage, we could do another volunteer opportunity, much like we did with the American Chestnut Grove.
Then there's also a program that we're proposing called the American Heritage Historical Tree. This is a longer term, but which suggests setting aside and planting trees that have significant impact links to American history. There's an organization, the American Heritage Tree Foundation out of North Carolina. What they do is they take trees that have had special significance with either individuals or other historic events in the country, and they propagate these seeds, propagate the seeds from those plants, saplings or cuttings, and then they make those available for sale for planting, for educational and environmental awareness. We think that we could dovetail with that program, and especially with the program that we have here in the township where we've identified some historic trees in the township that would be really needed to involve some students, high school students, middle school students as well, maybe take some of the cuttings, the nuts, seeds from these plants, from these trees, we could start them in the schools, and we could then propagate them. So it'd be pretty cool to have a continuing historic events, historic meaning, something that's here in the township and put into these groves. Importantly, about the cost for these, I think that with memorial plantings, donations from other individuals and citizens here in the township, we could offset the cost for this program through donation program. Which brings us up then to the last subject, and that would be street names for the city or the park roads. Let Natalie speak about that.
Thanks. Hi. So now that more and more people are using the park, it's very important for safety reasons that the roads have official names so that it's 911 compliant. So, we think that these names should celebrate Pennsylvania's native trees. So, not only do we propose that we name these roads after some of our native trees, we propose that we plant those same trees along their namesakes. So the first road is the Loop Road, everybody calls it the Loop Road, that's in red there. We propose that we call it Red Bud Road. If you don't know what red bud is, it's a beautiful springflower and very showy red pink shrub. For the road that is providing access to the great lawn playground area, which is in blue there, we propose Paw Paw Lane. Paw Paw is a really cool tree that has a neat fruit. If you were a scout, you probably sang the Paw Paw song. It was very popular more so a while back. And then for the future road that will be leading to the Nature Center, which is in yellow over there, we propose Sugar Maple Way. Everybody knows a sugar maple, it's got a beautiful yellow fall color. And then although it's not listed on the master plan, the connector that goes from the path or that connects the park to Arrowhead Trail, a lot of people use that, and for that reason, and it goes near the chestnut orchard, we propose that it's named the American Chestnut Trail. So that's all we have. Just wanted to know if you have any questions? And yes, we did check to make sure there were no names in the township that matched this.
What about Canonsburg?
Did not check Canonsburg. I checked all the ones that are on the garbage list.
Isn't that one of the 1531s that it is?
Yeah, we would have to check it against the Canonsburg postal office to make sure there's not.
I don't think there's a street like that.
But I, you know, the.
Wait a second, Paul. I want to know, do you know the words to the Paw Paw song?
I do not know the words. Despite my many years in scouts.
Come on, spell one out, I know you know.
Must be a girl scout song, not a boy scout song. But, you know, one thing that we started this year that we intend to continue are planting of trees in the park. It's one of the things that I think will transform that area to give it more of a context of what was originally invasion, the county park. This is no different than it was in Peterswood Park many years ago. When I started here, there were no trees in Peterswood Park, and all those plantings did in fact transform that. And I do think there's real value, particularly with the native species, having them in the park and having a way with identifiers and with donation plaques as a way to help offset the cost and also make it something that's informative and useful for not only kids that may be in scouts, but also the fact that you have the high school across the border, and I can see where it can be an educational thing. I don't know what the street names for the road should be, but I can tell you this, we need to have street names. We've got confusion up there right now where just on simple things like deliveries, the pickings and things like that, people cannot find it, and they're ending up over at the high school as opposed to the park. So, we need to get these roads named, and I do think it's also a safety issue as the park becomes more and more used.
And Parks and Rec has reviewed these names, and they're okay with them?
Yes.
You're good with that, Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Do we have a list of the native trees that you're choosing these from? I'm not familiar with what.
We have, there is a list of native trees, we're happy to provide that for you.
Yeah, there's like, what, 190 native trees?
I'm also an ecologist by profession, and I do a lot of botanical surveys, so I kind of just know what the trees are, but I do have a, yeah, the PA puts out a list of native species.
Well, we've had the experience with chestnuts, I guess, I'm going to go back like 50 years, is that when they got wiped out?
Even longer than that.
Yeah, well, I have the recollection of being able to recall having chestnut trees, let's put it that way, or buckeye trees to some people. The one tree that I miss most is the elm. And I think I'm disappointed that we haven't found an elm that is disease resistant.
Two main elms, slippery elm and the American elm, but the American elm has really been susceptible to the blight, not so much the slippery elm, but that's ongoing.
I mean, the wineglass shape of an elm tree is just spectacular when it's a specimen.
And I do see them, I do field work, I'll see them more in like regenerating areas, but no like great, you know, big, large ones.
And I have no clue what a paw paw tree looks like, so.
But you'll be glad to know that my wife does know the paw paw song. She just texted me the, where's the paw paw song? Where oh, where oh, where is Susie? Way down yonder in the paw paw patch, picking up paw paws, putting them in a basket, picking up paw paws, putting them in a basket. So, whenever we cut there, if we choose that street name, I guess my wife's tree will have to come sing the paw paw song.
Thank you for asking.
No problem. No problem. I know somebody would know. No, I didn't.
They're an interesting fruit type.
Kids in the playground too, kids who know paw patrol, I think it would also be really recognizable for young ones and old ones, so.
Yeah, I think we're definitely doing the right thing in the park. I mean, my late mother-in-law has a bench overseeing the chestnut tree farm there, it's going to be gorgeous, so, just a beautiful view, and definitely think it's a great idea to have these trails with trees outlining, you know, for educational purposes. I just, I would take a little pause with the naming of the streets tonight, I think it hasn't been done for a long time, I think we do need to do it, but I'm not quite sure that this is, at least in my opinion, the names we want to go with tonight.
I would agree, I'm going to proponent, maybe not a very vocal one, of the service members from the township that were killed in action, so I'm going to be hard no on the street names, but I think the other two ideas are great, and I think we should move forward with them.
Well, my position, we tasked Parks and Rec with naming the streets, apparently Parks and Rec is comfortable with these names, so, I mean, I'll make a motion that we approve the street names.
I'll second it, only so I can table it.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve the street names, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Five to two?
Two to five.
Two to five. Two yes, five no, so that motion does not pass.
Just so I understand, because I do think we need to move forward, are you saying you don't like these specific names, or are you saying, as Mr. Steigl has suggested, that the streets should be used to recognize veterans?
Or at least the concept of community service.
Correct. Something historic to Peterstownship, whether it's a veteran or, you know, something that's, you know, someone served for Peterstownship for a long period of time.
Okay.
I do, I agree that we should have the arboretum, I mean, there's a big arboretum behind the Coliseum in West WVU, and they have every tree that's indigenous to West Virginia, and it's, there's a nice path, and they have all those sites. I mean, I don't know if we're going to put every one that is indigenous, because otherwise we wouldn't have a park left, but I think it is a good idea, plus, you know, trees are good for the environment and all that, so I have no problem doing that. I mean, I disagree, I agree with Mr. Cozer that, you know, that we should have let the Parks and Rec Board pick these names. I do not think it's appropriate to save those naming rights for those streets to people who perform some service or something like that. I mean, you know, we didn't do that for, you know, Mike Silvestri, who was here forever and was a great township manager, you know, we didn't do that for a lot of other people that served on these boards for lengthy periods of time and were very productive in the township. I just don't think that's the right route to go. I mean, if you don't like these names, that's fine, but I don't, I don't think they should be.
That's not what I was suggesting either, I was suggesting what Mr. Dawden has brought forth several times with people that were killed in action, and, you know.
Well, I mean, we have a memorial right outside this building for that.
I'd say we have a street called Bruni Drive.
Well, I understand that, but that's because she wouldn't give us the land.
That's right.
That was part of the deal. So, I mean, she wouldn't sell us the land because that was part of the, I'm not saying that it's the wrong thing to do, I'm just saying that's, that would not be my preference. And I think we need them named, and I do think there's a safety factor there, and, you know, I have no problem with those names.
Okay, well, we had a motion.
I think it was got, I understand that, I'm just saying.
Should we move to table it?
Yeah, I moved, but that wasn't seconded.
Oh, I'll second that, then.
What was the second?
The table.
I thought. We've already voted on it.
We voted against it, well, I thought you.
Yeah, we lost the tab.
Whether you table or not, it's coming back to you because we have to have names. So sometime, maybe the second meeting in January, we'll have a proposal in front of you.
So you need a motion to move forward with the other two programs, am I right?
That would be good.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next item, ordinance levying a tax on the assessed value of real estate property located in Peterstownship for 2025.
As discussed during the budget workshops, the 2024 Peterstownship operating budget does not require an increase in property tax levy. The proposed ordinance sets the 2025 property tax levy at 1.7 mils. This represents a dollar seventy on each thousand dollars of property assessed value. You know, the one thing that I would like to say though is that I'm concerned that going forward, that you should anticipate at some point it will be necessary to have a tax increase, just based upon what we're seeing with earned income tax receipts this year, with the slowing of the amount of increase you see in property taxes, and we're like everybody else, we're a service industry and costs are going up. So at some point in the future, you will see a tax increase.
And I think this, at least this councilman, and I believe my associates, understand that, we talked about the timing of it.
Yes.
And didn't feel it was necessary to implement it at this time.
And it's not, and it's not, and I would agree with that. I just want to caution people that in the future, and so it's my recommendation to adopt ordinance 910 establishing the tax levy.
What type of increase would you anticipate?
I don't know that, and it's always.
Because I don't want to go from not doing, you know, not leaving it the way it is, and then next year you come in here and say we need, you know, 0.3 or whatever that is.
Each tenth of a mill raises how much?
Three hundred and something thousand, like 330, something like that, 310?
It won't be that, but, and I do, I'm comfortable with enacting the ordinance as it is now.
Okay, and then I'm going to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 910 establishing a tax levy of 1.7 mils on the assessed value of real property in Peterstownship for 2025. I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, ordinance adopting 2025 Peterstownship operating budget.
We've spent a lot of time talking about this in our budget workshops, what you see on the screen is a summary of both revenues and expenditures. As some people pointed out to us, the expenditures next year greatly exceed those revenues. What that is mostly a reflection of is the fact that we have bond money that we've been holding on to, to undertake projects in the park. In addition to that, on both the revenue, on the expenditure side, there is an assumption that we're going to move forward with the second phase of Rolling Hill Park. If we do that, that will be funded with a bond issue, and what council has suggested is that we're going to review that in the spring of this year and make a decision as to whether or not to move forward with that project. What you see in terms of revenues is what you would expect to see, real estate earned income tax are the primary sources of revenues. This year, this upcoming year, you see an oversized amount for grants, and again, that's the fortunate nature of having received a number of grants to offset those large capital items that we're intending to take on, and that would be, that amount would be extraordinary for our community. And then, oh, excuse me. I apologize, I've got to the revenue charge. You know, in terms of expenditures, yeah, in terms of expenditures, the most significant thing that you're seeing are the expenditures that are related to the capital projects, which include both the park projects as well as the paving projects, so.
All right, Mr. Lauer, before I make the motion, of course, in the behalf of council, I want to thank you, Kyle, Tracy, for all your hard work on this. I don't think the residents of the community understand how much hard work goes into preparing the budget every year, so, as always, as is the case every year, great job, all three of you on putting this budget together. So I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 911 establishing the 2025 Peterstownship operating budget.
Second.
Before we vote on this, I just want to make it clear that just because we adopt this budget, there's no guarantee that we're going to be voting to move forward with any particular project, that those, everything's going to be voted on individually down the road.
That's true on all projects of significant nature, the other side of it is this is a an action plan and things that are normal expenditures.
And the same will go for the next item as well.
Okay, have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, ordinance adopting 2025 to 2029 Peterstownship capital improvement program.
So in your doc, there is a summary of the major projects that are scheduled for next year, the budget itself actually looks at this over a five-year period. Most significant are projects related to highway maintenance, next year's paving program is $2,300,000. In addition to that, if you look above, there's $220,000 that have been earmarked for stormwater projects. And then, we have this series of park projects, it's finishing off the ballfields one and two, the aquatic center, and I'm not sure, my guess is we're not going to meet the expenditures that we had anticipated meeting this year for that project, but it's a significant expenditure next year. And then, again, council's going to make a decision whether or not to move ahead with Rolling Hills Phase Two sometime in the spring, so. With that, it's my recommendation that council adopt ordinance 912 establishing the 2025-2029 capital improvement program.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, authorization from Peterstownship Police Department to make application Pennsylvania Game Commission for Sharpshooter Deer Management Program and undertake the program if approved.
All yours, Jason.
All right, so we're back again to get approval for your, this will be the fourth year specifically of sharpshooting. You know, we made this decision based on some of the complaints we're getting back in, you know, 2020, 2021, we've been through this, so, again, we're looking for application, file application for the Game Commission for Sharpshooting, which would be, again, in February of 2025, it would begin. We'd like to submit that application by the end of December, gives the Game Commission a month, a little bit over a month to review it, and we can make any changes that we need to, things like that. So, looking at the numbers, you know, when we started this, the first year of sharpshooting in 2022, you know, it was our goal in five years to kind of see where the accidents, the miscellaneous deer complaints go, as is with most of these programs you see around, you know, the trends generally take about five years to see any type of real change. So, as it stands right now, looking, you know, year to date, to date we've had 80 accidents this year, last year we had 93, so it's a reduction of about 14%.
Why does it say 21 in here? Year-to-date incidents, 21.
So that, that's like, those are like miscellaneous incidents, we have people calling us for deer stuck in their fences, deer stuck in soccer nets, deer, you know, it's just, it's just kind of a secondary means we use to kind of track, you know, the deer, the deer incidents.
How many did we kill in archery? I know it centers up close, 50?
So in archery, year-to-date, we're at 50 right now. Last year, last year we took 70. There's actually a typo in that summary I sent over, I emailed Mr. Lauer about it. Last year, 23, 24 was 70, not 50. This year, I believe 45 or 50 year-to-date.
So the deer meat still gets donated to a food bank?
The archers are allowed to keep their deer.
I know they are.
All the deer meat gets donated to.
So, of all these incidents, I don't know how many said there were with these deer, I don't even see it in here, it's got to be someplace. I guess it doesn't say in here, anyway.
It's all.
Is it in there?
It's all the PDF. You go to page 52, okay.
Like, out of, I mean, what, are any of those, like, how many of those caused, you know, property damage to a vehicle and, you know, above a certain dollar amount or below a certain dollar? How many resulted in injury to a person? Do we have those types of statistics?
I don't keep that specific, I think we're at two or three reportable crashes this year, so most of our deer incidents, while they do cause damage to the vehicle, it doesn't require a vehicle to be towed, or it doesn't result in injury to the driver, no.
So this would be the third year or the fourth year?
This will be the fourth year. I mean, I think, based on what we, and I don't have the actual statistics, but based on the accidents that we've seen, you know, it's safe to say all of them caused some level of damage to vehicles. Now, to what level, I don't remember those numbers.
I know, I just, I mean, I personally don't see the utility of this program, but because...
Well, wait till your car is the one with the dented fender.
I hit one.
Okay.
I called the police, they didn't come. I got out, snapped the thing back in, looked for the deer, it was gone. I waited 15 minutes, no one came, I went out, I went to work. I mean, you know, it's the way of what happens, I mean, you could shoot 2,000 of them, and we're still going to have deer. So, I mean, I think it's just, I mean, I don't have a problem with doing it, it's just, I don't, I don't know, I just think that money could be, you know, maybe used better someplace else, but that's okay. I'm still going to vote for it this year.
I'm still not.
You're not voting not?
He's been a consistent no, I think.
What's the yearly cost?
It's not a lot, it's like 20 something thousand.
Yeah, it's, I think it's actually less than 20. Some of the cost is offset by contributions made by.
Hunters sharing the harvest generally offsets the cost of processing, that's the majority of our costs, all the guns we use, all the night vision, they're personally owned, they're by us, it doesn't cost the township anything for it, so it's just another service.
You're paying the officers time when they're.
How many, how many tags or whatever you guys, is it?
We're going to do 250 again, and we could shoot 2,000, but we kind of have to, we kind of have to, we come to that number based on what we've seen in the past and how much time we want to dedicate our officers to this. You know, February historically is a month with, you know, where we're a little bit slower as far as incidents go and things like that, so just kind of the way it falls, you know, we take those 10, 11 nights and do it, and it generally has not caused us any staffing issues or anything like that. Like I said, we could do this for the total allowable time if we wanted to, but it's not practical based on, you know, what we're looking for. We try to keep it down to the first two, three weeks of February, and that's.
You could come to my house there.
I was going to say, Dr. Poros, you have somebody who wants to speak to this.
Mr. Nass?
Yes.
You can come next week if you want. Jim Nass of 185 Springdale, I don't know how many you've killed on our farm, but you've had an accident with your automobile, they just devastate our shrubs. You've had an accident with your automobile, they just devastate our shrubs. It just never ends. And when these fellows come, it's so clean, there's never blood, there's never anything. It's a, you don't even hear the gun go off, and the animal's gone. Come next week.
My question, Jason, would be, if you look at your map, and everybody can up there, obviously, the number of incidents both on Route 19 and McMurray Road, which are two significantly occupied locations, what could we do to maybe become more successful in there?
We're at the mercy of private property owners. This, the, the cemeteries, I reach out, I talk to them every year, specifically Queen of Heaven, that it's kind of a policy across the board that they don't allow any type of hunting or shooting in their, in their cemeteries. And that's kind of the way that they are with that, but they, they don't, they don't allow it. And those areas, you see crashes, or a lot of times areas where there's private property that we can't obtain access to. And, and that's, that's our struggle. So, and we constantly have people reaching out to us, and that, a lot of the other deer you see across the township, those are private property owners that have reached out to us that have significant issues with, with the deer, and as part of the program, we try to address that also. But we do spend the majority of our time in those, the, the time it takes per deer, if you will, along the 19 corridor and East of Great Lakes, is, is a lot longer than in the more, I guess rural, for lack of a better term, areas of the township. So we're, we're working in those areas. We, we have businesses, we have car dealerships, we have other areas where we do work with them during it, but just some of those areas, you see, it's just, it's just a challenge for us.
On McMurray, it would look as if you're using fire department's property, but.
We also have some private property right around there that we have access to.
I wasn't here for, like, the beginning of the program when it started. Is there, like, an end goal, you know, like, do it for 10 years, or?
Ideally, we'd like to get it down to like 65 accidents. And again, that's something collectively we came up with, we thought was realistic. Now, our challenge compared to any other municipality that's doing this is we lose spots more than we gain them every year. So for example, Galley Road, the apartment complex there, we've always had permission to, if you take there, we've lost that, and we've seen accidents on Waterdam, and, you know, we, the area, Lenwood Golf Course, all that go up as a result, you know.
Yeah, we should think if they're building big apartment complexes, there, there's not a lot of, a lot of deer hunkering around there.
Not any, well, there was.
They would move someplace else. They gotta move to North Strabane, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's a problem.
And then, is there, like?
Yeah, they're going to go wherever they can eat, so, you know.
Do you have any, not like, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't know much about it, but, and not that I'm opposed to it, but I just, deer, like, do they stay in a certain area? So like, are the, the deer that are in township generally are here and going to stay?
Generally, yeah. The bucks have a larger home range than, than does, but generally speaking, yeah, it's the same few hundred yards that they stay in, you know.
Your, your number of accidents might be staying where township is growing, so.
Well, and that's, and that's, that's been our challenge, you know, to decrease it with the amount of development that we're having is, is, actually, if you look in the area like Brooklyn Road, for example, you know, that, all those deer you pushed into, into one area, and we're starting, not only, you know, the accidents just tell kind of one part of it, but we get calls daily from people that want us to use their property, and we can't, it's not feasible for archery hunting or sharpshooting, or there's other restrictions that just don't, we're not able to, to get into it. So that's something constantly, myself and Corporal Ross and Klein's kind of hopefully going to take this over and be up in front of you sooner rather than later, and, you know, we can, we're working with property owners constantly to, because we're getting the phone calls regularly about it, so.
Thank you very much for your report.
All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize the Peters Township Police Department to make applications in Pennsylvania Game Commission for the Sharpshooter Deer Management Program and to undertake the program if approved.
Second. Motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Six, one, Mr. Lauer. Next item, award contract for police department vehicles through the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program.
So, you know, council has adopted the budget. One of the problems we have with, with vehicles is the long lead times, and so what we're recommending, as we've done for the last couple of years, since the budget has been approved and these expenditures are going to occur in 2025, is that we actually award contracts for these tonight. The 2025 budget includes an appropriation of $225,000 to acquire three vehicles for the police department. This time, Chief Clever is proposing that we proceed with the purchase of two vehicles. The purchase of vehicles is being completed under Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program. Under this program, the state sets a minimum discount for purchases, and Whitmire Auto Group has provided us a quotation for Chevy Tahos at a delivered price of $54,000. We expect that delivery to occur sometime in July or August. Once they're delivered, they'll have to be outfitted, and it's estimated that, that the cost for that is an additional $20,000. We're not asking council to take action on that tonight because that price may well, well change between now and then. The, these cars are being purchased under the Equitable Share Program Fund, and this is the revenues that we receive because of the police department's participation in U.S. Food and Drug Administration Task Force. So it's going to be my recommendation that council award a contract under the CoStarz Program for the purchase of two 2024 Chevy Tahos for use by the police department in the amount of $108,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chief, do you want?
You want to say anything, Keith?
The only thing I would say is those two cars are actually on the ground at Whitmore right now. We don't have to wait till June or July to get them. They're 24s, they had a couple left over that somebody didn't take, and we were able to put our mitts on them. So we're going to get those significantly quicker than June or July. If we were waiting for 25s, the price would be significantly higher, well, not significantly, but at least somewhat higher. So that's why we wanted to jump on these two, so.
What color are they? So when they're on the road, I can make sure I can pull it over.
They will be black.
Okay.
They're, if you guys haven't seen them, we have two now. We just put the two that we purchased in March.
Oh, you wouldn't know. You wouldn't see them. I, I, the only time I saw them was, I, I sort of thought it was one, and then I saw it was a turner or something, and that there was a turn signal on the.
On, on the overhead.
On the overhead, and I was like, no, that's not.
These are very nice, these are very nice police cars.
Yeah, they are nice. They're very nice.
They're spectacular. We appreciate you allowing us to buy them because they're, utility-wise, they are spectacular for us.
So they're all unmarked, is that what?
I'm sorry, sir?
No, they are marked.
They are marked. They will all be marked cars, yeah. The, these, the, the, the two that we already have are already marked. There's one behind the police station that will definitely be there whenever everybody's done, if you want to drive past and see it. I can also, if anybody's interested, give me a call, I'll show it to you.
You can give us a ride?
Sure. You're paying for it, I'll take you for a ride.
Do something wrong, and you get behind the backseat.
The, but they are spectacular cars, and we, we do appreciate the, the ability to be able to purchase them, so.
That's good. We'll give a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
The only other thing is, Paul, you'll have to move up your commitment for the outfitting of the things, with the cages and sirens and badges, because they're going to come.
But that can actually be done with, with a purchase order as opposed to. Yeah, that, that's all on this.
Well, you didn't tell us that.
So.
All right.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
He's still.
Doesn't hurt to bribe us with candy and.
Yeah. In a beer glass.
Next item, award of contract for the acquisition of tasers through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program.
So Chief Clever proposed entering into a five-year contract for the acquisition of 15 Taser energy weapons to replace the existing inventory. The current weapons have reached, reached the end of their useful life but are no longer supported by Axon, the manufacturer. The 2025 budget includes an appropriation of $20,000 for the first annual payment for the Taser acquisition. The annual cost under the proposed contract is $18,946. So over the five-year period, the total cost of this program will be $97,106. This also is being funded out of the Equitable Share Program Fund, and it's, the township entered into a five-year contract with Axon Enterprises under the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for 15 Taser energy weapons at a cost of $97,106.
So moved.
Second.
How many years did we get out of the last ones? Was that five or 10?
Five.
I think we got more, well, there were some old ones that were purchased before I was here, so it's basic, it was basically an update of the same old model. That's the one that they no longer support, so.
So what do you do with the old ones, then?
I think we're going to give them back to Taser, but they don't.
Recycle them.
Yeah, they recycle them because nobody, they're not going to support them anymore, nobody's going to use them. The, I was able to get a bunch of cartridges for them for training for this year from some federal agencies for free, so that was nice that they gave them to us. Unfortunately, these new ones, nobody's going to give them to us for free, so.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
I have a motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Award of contract for cabin chassis for Public Works Department through the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Actually, the next two items are related. One, one is the cabin chassis, the other one is the dump body. The 2025 budget includes an appropriation of $250,000 to acquire replacement for Truck 27. Truck 27 is a 2014 International 7400 Dump Truck. The vehicle's nearing the end of its useful life, and we're proposing to replace the truck through the acquisition of a 2025 International MV607 Dump Truck with an aluminum body, snow pile, and spreader. The purchase of the cabin chassis is being done through the CoStarz Program. Hill International is, is offering a price of $117,328.5. Once the cabin chassis are, are delivered, the truck will need to be outfitted with a dump body, snow pile, and salt spreader. This is also being proposed as a purchase for CoStarz with, being awarded to Stevenson Equipment. The dump body, snow pile, and spreader will cost $110,300. The total cost of the truck when delivered will be $227,628.5. The estimated delivery is 16 to 18 months from our approval.
All right, I'll make a motion that we enter into a contract with Hill International Trucks N A LLC under the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase of an international truck model MV607 at a cost of $117,328.5. Don't we have to do them separate, don't we?
Can I do it all in one?
Can I do it all in one motion? All right. And I'll also make a motion that we enter into a contract with Stevenson Equipment under the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program for outfitting an international truck model MV607 at a cost of $110,300.
Second. Motion of the second.
Yeah, what, the existing one, is that, is that going to be put out for bid to sell?
Yeah, it'll be sold.
We can't use the body, anything from that truck on the new chassis. They're not interchangeable because of the years.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion?
We have to say yes twice, or what?
Aye.
In favor?
Aye, aye.
Oppose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer.
I'd record the vote as seven, nothing, since there's two motions.
It's 14.
All right, next item, authorize appropriate township officials to execute a contract with Bricer LLC to provide fire reporting services.
So the International Fire Code requires periodic inspections of fire safety systems in commercial buildings. In addition, it requires these records, that there be records of these periodic inspections, tests, and servicing that are maintained on the premise, but also maintained by, by the township. And I'm going to ask Chief McLaughlin to explain how this program works and what benefit it has for the fire department.
Sure, thank you. Like Mr. Lauer said, even this building with the fire alarm system, the sprinkler system, and the fire extinguishers gets three annual inspections each year. The contractor that does that provides a pink slip or a carbon copy to the municipality that they're required to keep on hand for three years. What this company does is a third-party company that uploads those documents, the contractors upload those documents into Bricer, and Bricer becomes the depository for those documents for that three-year period. It gives us access as the fire department to those documents at any time, the building owner, the business owner, at any time. And it allows us to also check for compliance as well. It comes at no cost to the municipality. There is a fee structure that the contractors that do the inspections have to pay to upload those documents, and it's a nominal fee of $20. Other municipalities are using this, other municipalities are looking to go to this here in the next couple of months. It helps us out. One of the goals when we had, we used to have a daylight fire inspector Monday through Friday, 7 to 5. With the expansion of Station 3 and short staffing, we had to move the fire inspectors to 24-hour shifts. This will help their continuity a little bit, and it creates ways to save money at no cost to us.
I move that we authorize the appropriate township officials to execute a contract with Bricer LLC to provide the fire reporting services that we're discussing here this evening.
Yeah, I'll second. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So are you guys able to upload things from your inspections, or this is just third-party?
These are just third-party. So this is separate from what our records management system is, yes. We can access those files and bring them over to our records management system, but that has to be done by our personnel. They do not have access to our records management system.
Okay.
Motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, award of contract action of a fire truck through the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program.
So on October 12, Peters Township Council authorized the township manager and the fire chief to seek bids under the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program for a fire engine. Quotations were solicited from six different manufacturers. It resulted in 11 different proposals from four different manufacturers. Am I that right? And below are the, what I'm showing you on the screen here are the proposals that were submitted. Do you want to go through this?
Yes, most certainly. And there was one other one that came in from Seagrave, which was another apparatus manufacturer. I got it on Wednesday, so obviously well after the document was put out, but it, it came in at $1,179,000.
Well, that's a long wish to take.
No. What we, what we did was, like we always do, we always look for creative ways to save money and look for fire apparatus. The fire apparatus market, like we've explained before, is something, we're authorizing a purchase now that we're not going to see until late 2027. That, that's something that's forward to me, too. I've, I've never seen that before either. With that, we've, we challenged companies to get creative, and we received multiple proposals. The program trucks that we received were due to take delivery in 2025 or 2026. That's too soon, that's before this budget and money's going to become available in 2027. So we, we set those proposals aside. From there, we took all of the proposals that were going to be delivered within our timeframe and delivered in 2027 and ranked them here. I heard council's challenge and accepted it to see what we can do to find creative ways to purchase things. And something that came about from us is something that I did not expect, was a softened program pumper at a cost of $834,000. And well, that is an exorbitant amount of money. It comes in over $50,000 cheaper than the pumper that would be a sister to Engine 3 that we just purchased. That was the low bid the last time we did this in, in 2022, and this beat it by $50,000.
And that timeline, like, that, that doesn't bother you? That, that's okay?
It's okay, and what's, what's okay for it is because we're planning, this is going to replace a 2010 pumper. We service trucks for about 17 years at max, so it will reach its max service life at 17 years, and we'll replace it in 2020. It just involves a lot of forecasting and planning.
Because I thought if you wanted it sooner, you know, there's a lot of other ones we could do.
Well, one, one of the things that Chief McLaughlin has done, well, the last time Well, one of, one of the things that Chief McLaughlin has done, well, the last time we purchased a truck, we held on to a vehicle. So there's a vehicle in reserve that is not normally used. So that if something happens, we, we.
You had them all lined up.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So on top of that, though, I mean, the argument I make all the time is that we added a pumper when we got a rescue pumper that wasn't there previously. So you're basically up two engines right now compared to what you were up 10 years ago.
If you look at it like we added a pumper, we had a straight rescue truck before. We purchased one truck that now does both things. It's more economical for our ISO rating and our pump capacity and what it needs to be for our buildings and our fire rating.
I agree with that, but I think that it's, I think that there's, there's at least one too many, one engine more than we need.
What it's allowed us to do is when a truck from Station 1 goes down or out of service, we're able to run the rescue in its place. The only time we're running the rescue or that we're bringing the wagon up is when a pumper's going out of service for a long period of time. But we're also needing now to spread out the usage of the vehicles over these as well. So the less vehicles we have, the more one single vehicle gets used. The 2019 demo pumper that we purchased from Toyn has over 63,000 miles on it already.
Wow.
It's a significant.
Is that the one we got the discount on?
Yes.
Because it was a demo or something like?
Yes, yes, and had it painted. You know, and, and to council's credit, they're always challenging us to find creative ways to buy fire trucks. In 2019, we bought that demo. In 2023, we bought a, it's called a BMP or Build My Peers program truck where we kept our options under 400 line items and it reduced the cost. And that Suffin program pumper is almost the exact same thing. It's a, here's what you get and you don't throw a fit. And it very closely matches what our boilerplate spec was. We even trimmed our spec down. When we were doing this in 2018 to purchase the aerial, our, our spec sheet was 100 pages long. We've trimmed that down to about 30 line items of things that we would like to see in a truck. Mostly its length, its pump capacity, its water capacity, things like that. Things that any manufacturer can take and put the rum and spin on it.
You looked at the commercial chassis then, Mr.?
Yes, we did. Looked at the commercial chassis. A couple of things came, I actually cited in an article from Fire Engineering that was published in 2020 that compares custom versus commercial cab chassis. And what we came up with was, the commercial cab chassis, a couple of the cons, maxed at four seats total. So we can't have any more crew seats than four. This truck will be up at Station 1. We want to have room for the volunteer members and things like that in the apparatus. So this truck is spec'd to have at least five seats, possibly six. There's a significantly reduced amount of space in the cab. So when we talked to manufacturers about the commercial cab, we asked them, okay, well, we want our medical cabinet to be in here because for our advanced life support license, we need frontline medications, EBNF and things like that, and they have to be climate controlled. We were not able to put those inside of the cab because of the reduced space. When we would put them in a compartment on the body, we would have to then have a climate controlled area, which brought that cost back up as well. Lower axle ratings and reduced horsepower motors for those, they don't accept unless you get a custom commercial chassis, which that brings your cost right up to where the, the custom cab chassis are as well. And there were also variables in them and the fact that there was money due at signing and they couldn't guarantee that what they purchased that cabin chassis for was what they quoted us at the time because of the lead times on the chassis. With Suffin, they manufacture their own cabin chassis, so they're able to fix the cost. And the only money that we'll spend is when we take delivery of the truck in 2027. The wheelbase as well, it stretched out the overall length of the truck to well over 35 feet. Our goal was to keep this truck under 31 feet. Something that you and I used to discuss all the time was these exorbitantly large pumppers and the fire departments getting outrageous with them, but they really need to be kept shorter. The parking lots that we have to get into are pretty tight. Even if you look at the garbage trucks that service our area, they're not commercial cab or traditional cab garbage trucks. They're cab forward where the front axle sits behind the driver. That's so it can turn around cul-de-sacs, make garbage, or make parking lots readily accessible. Our fire trucks are designed the same way. In rural America, that's where we see a lot of these commercial cab trucks and we service them well. And they, they don't have as many typically emergencies that we do on an annual basis, so their usage is, is brought down.
So I appreciate all your, you know, I don't understand all the intricacies that you do, but go on the big picture on this one, Chief. So last true pumper we bought, well, not last one, but we had one in 2010 and we went nine years without buying right a pumper. And we're buying three of them within five years. Explain that to me.
So we're authorizing a purchase that this is going to happen within three years. The last pumper we came to purchase was in 2022. We took delivery of it in 2023. So we'll take delivery of two pumppers within four years. And that's strictly on the 2017. We actually bought the rescue pumper in 2014, 2010, 2014, 2018, 2019, 2022 and today.
Yes. It just seems like we're buying a lot of pumblers in one.
Yeah, like I said a bunch of times, I'd rather spend the money on people. I'd rather hire more people than have more equipment.
I do too, and, and.
I mean, it's a hell of a lot of seats and nobody to fill them.
Nights like tonight, Monday nights with the volunteer duty program and the annual report will highlight a couple of things of how the volunteer duty program has just blown up in the last couple of years. Overnight duty shifts have expanded significantly. For us to have a frontline pumper that only has four seats, I think we're doing a disservice to some of those members. I don't want to send the wrong message to them as well. I want to let them know that they're welcome and we want them to ride on these trucks and just not exclude it for the career personnel that will be riding on them. I completely understand, you know, where you come from and wanting to have more people, I would too. Unfortunately, apparatus is another large investment that, that we need as far as running the fire department. But it's the people that provide the service, not the trucks, but they need the apparatus and reliable ones for them to be able to do so.
This concerns me. I mean, I'm looking at the price of the pumper in 2014 was $450. In 2024, now it's going to be double that.
So does that mean those, whoever's going to be sitting in our seats 10 years from now is going to be paying $2 million for a pumper?
Kind of why it's important to stick to the schedule and, and keep replacing these. The more concerned one that I have is the one we purchased in 2022 that we paid $530,000 for. All we did was hit copy paste on the specs and its sister truck was $883,000.
See, and I would disagree with Mike. I think all you need to worry about is that aerial truck. That aerial truck goes get replaced, that's going to be.
A million eight.
Yeah.
That's.
Hampton Township's looking at one right now. Today's price is a million eight and that, and that's.
Yeah, see, I think, I think looking forward to that. We need to get back into the whole regional discussions.
And, and ISO.
There's no reason for every township right in a row to have a $2 million aerial truck that gets used twice a year.
I'm not going to disagree with that either. We have seen a significant amount of use on that aerial truck for sure. But it's one that we reduce the calls that it goes to, mostly when we're needed, commercial alarms, large setback calls because that truck has to last us 20 years. That's the one that's outside of the 17-year rotation because of its significant cost. We try to push that can to seven, to 20 years. Whether that's smart or not, I don't know because you're, is it worth resale value more three years before? That's, that's something that I need to get better at in, in forecasting what these trucks are going to be selling for on the secondary market, which we're seeing a lot more of now.
Maybe they'll end up with big drones, just the water just falling right on the house.
New Jersey has.
Who knows? You don't know, right? You know, George Johnson.
But to bring the discussion to a, to a close, Chief McLaughlin, my recommendation, the council award a contract under Co-Stars to shuffle and supplement the corporation for a pumper in accordance with the proposals and specifications dated December 9th for $834,256.26.
So moved, second. Do we know the power plant inside that or is that?
Yeah, so right now it's specified with a Cummins X10, which is the new generation of EPA regulations that come out in 2027. It is possible that that regulation gets expanded to 2028.
I think it might be rolled back actually.
Sooner later. I've heard later. I've heard later is a possibility.
We think it's going to be later.
If it is and they put an L9 motor in here, we'll actually receive a credit. Our preference is to have the L9 motor. The, the manufacturer asked if we're able to do it. Asked if we needed to specify with the current regulations.
It's an engine, not a motor.
But it goes in a fire engine.
Motors are electric.
Any other questions? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
And thank you for your time and your energy, Chief.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
I will say before, while Chief is still up there, some of my, my kids and some friends took a CPR class at the fire station right around Thanksgiving. And for anyone who hasn't taken a CPR class, you know, our township offers it and it was a great class and everybody was entertained and learned a ton from, I think our, the youngest there was probably about 13 to my age. So, thank you so much.
No, thank you and, and great public service announcement and anybody to go in the minutes as well. We hold CPR classes monthly, at least two classes each month. You can register on our website, ptfd64.org and the classes fill up for the most part, but if you sign up in advance, you'll, you'll reserve your spot, so thank you, Chief.
Yeah, it was great.
Thanks, Chief. That motion did pass six to one.
And Chief, before you go, thanks, the Christmas party was wonderful as always. Mr. Lewis and I were there with our spouses on Saturday night. It was a good time, so great job. I hear you were the one to organize it this year, so.
They forced me to, didn't they?
And Mr. Lauer was there as well as was Mr. Togge.
We have a very large group that helps organize that and to really show appreciation to our volunteers that have put up a lot of time each year and come out at all hours of the day and night, it's, it's important to them, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief. Payroll bills.
Prior to this evening's meeting, I reviewed the payroll bills, find everything to do in order.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Any comments on the reports? Hearing none. Traffic calming committee report?
Mark?
Just a quick update for council. Traffic calming committee met on November 5th, about a little more than a month ago. We've had significant activity with requests, especially during the second half of 2024. So it was time to get together to discuss those. We had sent out TPD and Mr. Mudru to do traffic counts. I don't want to get into the whole report. It's rather voluminous. It's in your docket. The long and short of it is, I don't think anything requires action from council tonight. It's more of an update, just to let you know kind of what's going on. And, and so I would say that if, if you could read the report, I'm always available to answer questions about any of the studies. So I'll leave it at that.
And before Mark finishes, you want to talk about Bitter Sweet Circle?
Yeah, the other one. Also under miscellaneous, it's, it's not in the docket. But I got a call about 2:30 today from the contractor for West Penn Power that's currently working up in the intersection there across from, I still call it the BP station, but along Bittersweet there. They're, they're doing the pole relocations and some of the line relocations in anticipation of the PennDOT intersection project that should be kicking off here in 2025. The purpose of the call was to ask about Sunday work. They have a couple small planned power outages for the next three Sundays. And I guess they went ahead and scheduled these. They notified the customers of them according to what this gentleman told me. But then somebody brought it to their attention, hey, you may need to go to council. You may need to get the townships okay on this. So, so I took the call. I asked him, I said, hey, you know, give us some specifics about the request and we have a council meeting tonight, so if you can get it to me within the next hour, we can discuss it. I haven't gotten an email, but we wanted to bring it up and, you know, Paul and I discussed it and we're not even sure since this is a public utility, number one, and number two, it's a very important PennDOT project, whether we have the authority to tell them they can't do this.
Yeah, I don't think that township has the ability to regulate activity on, on public utilities, but I, I just don't think that's possible.
The question is, they have to do it. They have to. Do they do it on a Sunday or do they do it on a Monday or Thursday?
Well, that was my question. My, my question to them was, you know.
During the whole season and people are home. Well, that's true, that's true. Like a weekend in December?
Yeah.
Of course, if you're doing a weekend in January, you can have to get people because they won't be able to watch NFL playoff games. Of course, they don't have the electricity.
I guess the next two weeks, there are no Steeler games on Sunday, so that's good. We've got a Saturday game and then the Christmas Day game.
And I don't know this for a fact, but, but that service that comes in this direction, I think terminates at the library and at the schools. So there would be reason to want to do this on a Sunday rather than to do it during the week.
Did I tell you how long it would be? Like how many hours?
No, I was expecting to get that information in the email that I asked for that I didn't get.
We're going to be at the same discussion about five years ago and they were doing all that utility work out by the old high school and the people were complaining about the nighttime jackhammering. We conclude there was nothing we could do about it other than ask them, you know, jackhammer at night?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that was, that was the night work request. This is a Sunday work request. But I, I don't think it's very extensive in terms of, you know, aerial extent of the outage. I think speculating, but there's, they're, they're doing another project currently up on like Bethany Drive, Clubview, Bealan. Same type of thing where they're pulling lines from, it basically involves from transformer to transformer. That, those customers are out, so it's only a handful of homes for a couple hours while they pull that wire through and then they hook up the service. So I'm making an assumption that it's the same thing up at the Bittersweet intersection. But I know, I do know that they had to put taller poles. They're going to have to transfer wires to those new poles. So it might be more extensive, but to your point, I don't know if, you know.
Did they say how they are alerting the residents?
I asked that. The gentleman was, again, he was from the contractor hired by West Penn. So he wasn't totally sure, but he, he thought that what they would do is, you know, all the billing is done electronically and they have all their customers' emails. He thought it was like an email blast to the customers that were affected about the planned outage. We haven't gotten any calls yet about it.
I feel like I get a text whenever.
It might be, it might be, it might be text, it might be email, but he thought it was electronic.
But the other thing about this is it's going to happen.
It's either happening this Sunday or some other day or maybe in January. But, you know, I don't know about whether, you know, if it's really cold and you need to eat and.
Well, I, I asked why on, you know, why on a Sunday and quite frankly, it was just a time crunch. You know, the PennDOT project is imminent and they're under the gun to get this work done before the state moves in with the intersection project.
So no action to be taken. Thanks for the information. Next item, date for regularization, meeting Monday, January 6th at 7:30.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything for next agenda?
Do we also have a meeting on January 13th?
No.
No.
No, we just have one.
But you're making interviewing people. Hey, Paul, I, I have a, a, this is like, maybe we could have the, who were the first batch of people that came in there? Wood Board were there on environmental?
Environmental board.
Yeah, maybe we could have them look, because when the guy came up and talked about them eating his plants, now it's thawed on me. Like maybe we should come up with some sort of a, a way to educate the public about which plants, you know, deers won't decimate and what trees, you know, I mean, I can't believe that would take very much effort on their part and yet, and then maybe disseminate it or somehow to the, to the residents. I mean, it, it would be a nice gesture.
We could work so the landscaping, planning these.
Yeah.
It just shocks me. It was like every new house that's built in this township, you see they'll plant avarite. And avarite is like deer nip, you know what I mean? Drive around the township and every, every avarite in the township that looks like a lollipop because it's eaten four and a half feet up or is high up as a deer can reach.
Okay. Motion in a turn.